We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Usually we do a roll call before, we can do a roll call, or do I have to stay with this agenda? Approve the agenda first, or is there...
Move for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll do a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Einman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderwoman Armors.
Here.
He's working tonight.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Oh, really? So, we have no new business, so we're back to old business with this liability worker compensation insurance. And just to give you a... Why I did this is, I, first of all, I got, I didn't have a good feeling with the deci... I'm not saying I didn't have a good feeling with the decision we made, but how I allowed it to go roundabout. You know, just a review on that, when we, when we made that vote, this to begin with is, first of all, Gary preferences, he didn't know if he was going to be here, and I kind of let him run with it, which I probably shouldn't have done, but I did that. And then we had three solid votes for Lakeland, and then we had two solid votes, would be Jeff and Suzie, for Murma, and then Ashley there was in, well, I don't know, I could be, and then we talked about it, but, but the board did make a decision, and, but, there again, I knew there was going to be, because I knew, and I just, I just felt, I didn't feel good about it. Like I say, not the decision and what the board, and I don't absolutely want to cause any kind of division. I don't do business like that. I, Happy will tell you, I called him the next day, and then Bob called me, and then Lee called me, because he was, he was just wondering what happened, and he wanted an opportunity to, he feels like that he had a good offer there, and he wanted to rebut, so, or wanted to at least talk to the board. I'm not, I don't know what's going to happen here, I'm, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, and coming up on four years as a mayor, I usually, it goes well with it. I told, I told you all in the beginning, I know Lee, but I, he's not a personal friend of mine. I do respect the fact that Lakeland is a, is a business in this city. I believe I stated that before the meeting, if you want to look at, I stated all that. I'm all about, I'm not sold, but I'm all about staying local, I like to support our local businesses, but I want to also, I will make a decision, a good, a solid decision to, what's best for the city too. So, I believe, I just, just talking to, just, just wanted to know where I'm at on it, and I, and I hope, and what I don't want to do is, is cause any discord with this board. I believe this, this board has been really good to work with, we've made some really good decisions. We're going to continue in the next year to make some great decisions, and it's going to be, it's going to be some tough decisions, because we've got some things going to go on with the budget. It's going to be very difficult. But I have all the confidence in the world in every one of you. Saying all that, Bob.
You know, Paul, I wanted to add, I mean, I've been dealing with commercial insurance in our business for a number of years, and it's a very complex and changing thing all the time. But one of the things I did get out of a constituent was, maybe we need to form an insurance committee to where we can study these things, because to sit here in one meeting and cover everything in a hundred and twenty thousand dollar line item, that's impossible.
It is.
I mean, and it's ever-changing. I'm not comfortable on voting unless I understand something. I'm not going to vote off the cuff, or because I like somebody better than I do somebody else, or their presentation is better, but it is a big deal. And speaking for the taxpayers, I am a taxpayer and stuff, I want the biggest bang for my buck, one hundred percent. So.
And, and, yeah, and, like I say, it was, the problem we have right now is, we have to make a decision, because there again, like we, we, what I, what I have witnessed in being a part of this, and maybe part of the problem is, we wait, wait till our backs against the wall. I don't remember ever having a meeting like, do we discuss this, does this gets discussed every year, Pam?
No.
I don't, I've never been on one of these meetings where we made a decision.
If the renewal come back, like reasonable, it was just brought before for approval, and it was up to the city administrator to make sure that everything is...
Yeah, right. And I talked to...
And I actually like this coming to the board, myself, I just want a committee formed, so we're better informed. I think this should continue to come to us, all insurance-related issues, because that's a huge expenditure.
No, that's, like I said, it's changing all the time.
Right.
You know, either through health insurance and the Affordable Care Act, or commercial insurance with things like this virus now, you know, because I've been on our insurance carrier about, where's the first work comp case going to come from, and how is that going to be covered? And they just throw their hands up, and nobody knows.
And they don't know.
You know, I mean, it's terrorism, you know, it's a separate riot, or it's earthquake is separate rioters. You know, all of those things, I mean, fortunately, we haven't had to face, but just like the situation we're in now, and I said last fall, we're one small step away from something that could happen. And, you know, again, we're here to do a job, and we're here to operate the best interests of the taxpayer and the city, and...
And, and from what you spoke of, Gary, this, because I asked Happy about, well, why are we even, and Martin had started this, and you can, Martin, it's Martin, he's just running with the ball that Martin started, and then we had that changeover, so I'm, it's, it, it will correct itself.
Well, and Lakeland doesn't represent Murma, Murma does their own, their own pool, they're their own representative, whereas NPR goes through a, an insurance carrier. So, we'd already started the process with Murma, and given them the information about the city, had their Roman numbers, and also Lakeland had done their numbers, and brought them to us, and we looked at them. And we wanted to bring you what we thought were the two best options that were given to us. I don't like to just, you know, tell you who to go with in a vacuum, it's kind of the same thing. It's like, well, you know, do you trust what I'm, what I'm bringing to you? So, this was the two best options, and I know it's, trying to have them here to explain and go through it, I think that helps you make a better decision. I know it's not easy, but you just have to make a decision, and it's a, it's a costly decision, but it's something every board does.
Yeah.
And, and we just work our way through it.
Do you think in the future that instead of just having one insurance provider from the local community, that we should have more than one, maybe all of them that have insurance? I realize that they have different brokers, right, and that are the same brokers. But wouldn't it be better for the taxpayer if there's competition? Because this is a case in point where they, in my opinion, should have come with their best and lowest, or whatever it was, right, the first time. So, I can't help but think that we shouldn't be, if we're wanting to go local and everything else, we should be going to more than just Lakeland.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, you know, but most of the other agents in town represent separate companies, like State Farm, or Shelter, or something like that, I don't know if there's any other...
So, what you would actually look for is a board, and then they would look for the different insurance carriers for you.
It's not where you're trying to look for different insur, or different brokers to bring you different insurances. I mean, that, you're out of control in that, in that case. So, usually you go through a broker.
For multiple carriers?
Right.
So, we could have one...
And have them do the comparison.
So, we could have multiple carriers then?
And that's what they did.
Excellent.
Yeah, and that's, you know, you'll, you'll, you'll see on those sheets that were brought by Lakeland, there were multiple companies that they looked at, looking at the bottom line, looking at deductibles, looking at coverages. Again, Murma does not, is not represented by a, by a broker, they do it their own, and that's why we had to bring the two of them to you.
But you still can use independent brokers.
Yeah, I was wondering why we couldn't do that.
So, we could go out for a quote with a broker if you wanted to change brokers.
I would be more comfortable with that in the future, I think. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Well, when afforded time to do that, you would have the committee manage that, and we would review, but...
I, I, I agree with the spirit of what you and Bob were saying, but I, we're just not afforded that time, right? This time we weren't.
This time, right.
Next time we will be.
Right.
What it also, it depends on who you sign up. They got switched that quickly, you can't just jump from company to company.
Yeah.
And, you know, do it for, those that you invited tonight to speed can tell you more about that. Because they're putting, if you're, if you're going to become part of, become part of something, then you have to stay with that for a certain amount of time, or there can be an issue.
Right, especially this one for seven years plus, the, the first one we're doing tonight, right?
But can you expound on that, there can be an issue, meaning financial impact, or other, what would issue?
Usually it's the incentives that he talked about last time.
Okay. Let's leave, you want to, can you speak on that? Okay.
And welcome, sorry about the time that you stayed around.
Glad to be here, sorry to be back a week later.
I forgot your name.
Matthew.
Matthew, okay.
Okay. So, independent agents or brokers, you know, is somebody that represents multiple different carriers. So, if you wanted to try and find the best broker or independent agent, you'd do a request for qualifications, where you said, all right, all you different brokers, send us in what you can do, and how good you are at it, and things like that. And they would respond to that, and give you a list of their accomplishments, and their customers and things. And then you would pick from that list who you want to be your broker, and they would approach the different commercial carriers, and figure out who had the best price for you. You don't want them to bring you prices, because then you don't, because a commercial carrier will only give a quote for St. Genevieve to one of their agents, one of their independent agents. They won't give it to five or six. So, if you have them bring you pricing with that RFQ, then you only identify who's the quickest to lock up the different carriers, it doesn't necessarily tell you who's the best. That's kind of how the commercial side works. We don't involve ourselves in that, because we deal directly with our own members. So, we don't build in a brokerage fee or anything like that. So, a broker would never bring you anything that we had to offer. Murma itself has a broker that we use to place our excess coverages. Remember, we cover the first half a million to one and a quarter million, and then we buy excess for losses above that. We pay that broker a fee, it's like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, to bring us the best pricing net of commissions. At the city levels, typically, you all aren't paying your brokers a fee, they are getting a commission from the placement of the coverage from whatever insurer they come with. So, they would never bring you a proposal from us, because we're not going to pay them to present a price for us if we were selected. So, that's why we don't operate the same way that traditional commercial insurance does. We also, we don't function like a traditional commercial insurance. I understand the need to buy locally, so if you all select a local broker, you place your business with him, he sends most of it to wherever the company, the carrier is housed, and he keeps a chunk of it for himself. Typically, the chunk that he keeps for himself is less than premium than the amount of money we save a city when we're looking at comparable coverages and deductibles and things. In this case, because there was never a set of standardized specifications of what you wanted your coverage to look like, they vary somewhat between the limits and the deductibles, and I think even the properties that were covered. So, there's variation there. You know, in your shoes, the best thing you could do is, when you decide to do this again, is decide what you want your coverage to look like, and then kind of move forward from there. Ours wouldn't change, we would say, okay, this is what you ask for, this is what we offer. But for all the commercial carriers, then they would present something that was pretty comparable among themselves, if that helps you. You know, we talked about the local purchase. There isn't a local purchase if you go through Murma, because we're based out of Columbia. However, you become an owner of the association. You're, we're not sending a portion of our, the premiums you pay, or the assessments, off to a commercial carrier somewhere to handle it. We spend about two million, two and a half million out of the fifteen million we collect to purchase its excess insurance, but the majority of the cost stays within Murma, and that's what we use to fund ourselves. I talked about, at seven years, we start returning the monies that we haven't spent to our cities. It doesn't obligate you to stay in for seven years, but it is an incentive to stay in, because once we start giving money back for those years, you know, if you're with us, then you see a return on that. I think I mentioned this year, we returned about a million dollars on a fifteen million dollar total assessment, so that's seven and a half-ish percent or so of what we gave back. Another big difference between being part of the association and being a client with a commercial carrier is, if you all have a claims problem, or you're upset about something, you bring that to me, and if I can't resolve it, then you could take it to our Board of Directors, which I mentioned is elected by and from the membership. So, it's city administrators, city clerks, finance people that work for other cities like you. If you all elected to join, you could have the opportunity to run for a seat on the Board of Directors, and then you all could be the ones that make those kind of sticky decisions. And if you got tired of me, you could fire me, that's simply how it works. But the benefit of that is, as the need for coverages evolve over time, we are responsible to only our member cities. So, if something pops up, like this stinking pandemic, or something else that we did not anticipate, we have the ability to make coverage decisions that are in the best interest of our association. Good example of that comes out of Flint, when they had their water quality problems, there was a little cottage firm that started up on the east coast of suing municipal water systems. And it's pretty easy to do, you go to DNR, and you ask for any non-compliance reports that have been issued, because that's all public record, and then you see who's issued them, how bad you think they appear, and what kind of population base they have. And then if there's, and you think there's enough money there, then you file suit. So, that's what they did in Hannibal, up the river. Erin Brockovich, and she reaches out to these, there was two DC firms and one New York firm, and they filed suit, they filed it under a, it was like a fair merchandising act, is how they filed the claim, or the suit, which was kind of odd, but they brought it that way. And they alleged that the water was not essentially sufficient, or didn't meet the criteria for the use that it was marketed, which had to do with drinking. Well, obviously, municipal water systems, so water for drinking and bathing and washing your car, and water in your grass, and all kinds of other things. The problem that the city had was, fair merchandising practices are not an insurable item. So, I brought that to our Board of Directors, and our Board of Directors decided to provide a defense, because we didn't want the city left out on their own, and rolling over and giving these guys a settlement. And then they decide that Missouri's ripe for them to roll into, and file suit against our other eighty-some towns that have water systems. Prior to that, there was something with CenturyLink and their taxing lawsuit, where the city sued CenturyLink, had something to do with not paying the proper amount of tax, and then CenturyLink paid them, and then a portion of that got reversed, and then CenturyLink sued the cities, because they wanted part of that money back. Taxation, suits over taxation, is not an insurable item. But because it impacted over half of our members, we went ahead and picked up the defense on that for our cities. We have the ability to do things like that, and we're willing to do things like that, because the people we're responsible to are our member cities. It's not stockholders.
You picked up the defense, but you didn't pick up the liability.
We didn't pick up the indemnity, yes, we didn't pay. So, on the Hannibal one, it's public record, you can read about it. We spent half a million dollars defending their suit, that part's not public record, but it is now. We spent half a million dollars defending that suit. There was a fund set up for the monitoring of future health problems, it was like three hundred thousand dollars. And then the Hannibal Board of Public Works instituted a change to their water system that was part of the settlement. It wasn't the change that moved it from where they were out of compliance with DNR. They had already responded to that and changed the system, and they used a method that some of the people didn't like, so they actually filed suit trying to change the middle system, but they had to base it on the prior system. So, they're spending, I don't know, five point eight million dollars or so revamping their water system, to get rid of a method that works and falls within EPA guidelines to something else. And on the CenturyLink thing, it was the return of monies that CenturyLink had overpaid, or CenturyTale, one of the two, I can't remember which one it was. That's just an example. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it felt like a lot of talking to me. I could prattle on all night long with stories. I brought along a list of cities that has joined in Murma since July 1st of 2010. There's about thirty or so that have joined, there's about seven that have left. Probably more interested in the ones that have left than the ones that are joined. There's a story with all those, but you've got that information if you want it. I also brought along a list of the eight or ten cities that are closest to you all. And they've been with us from the eighties up to, I included each prairie, they're not terribly close, but they're a brand-new city, so I went ahead and left them on there, so if you all wanted to reach out and talk to any of them. We don't have a sales force, so I always encourage prospective members to call towns that are with us and ask us what they think.
Yeah, this would have been, this would have been really good to, there again, on the, on the ifs and buts, but next time we do this, it should have been good information to have to make you phone calls instead of the night we had to make a decision. Yes, so...
Matthew, can I, sorry, can I ask?
Sure.
Um, you had mentioned at the la, last, it was only last week, right? I don't know what day it is. Last week about the, the difference in the, the proposed coverage.
Yes.
The three-point-five million limit, and et cetera. Have you ever, with your members, had experience where these limits were not sufficient?
No.
Not a single case?
The biggest case we've ever had was a, a taser-involved fatality about eight years ago. And the more we got into it, the worse it got. We settled it for two and a half million dollars, which was our limit at that time. If our limit would have been higher, it would have been a little bigger settlement, probably. And it was getting close to the tipping point where we would have taken it to trial. I don't think, well, I'm comfortable with the three and a half million. The three and a half million's on the federal claims, and that's where all your law enforcement stuffs are going to go, and also your auto claims. That's where municipalities have the biggest exposure.
And have any of the members expressed that they would like that to increase?
No.
No, everybody's...
We have, I think one member buys an umbrella policy that sets over the top of ours. They have an ethanol plant that sits continuous to their town, and they do power generation. So, they have a neat deal worked out with that factory, where there's a gas turbine generator that uses a jet engine to spin an electrical generator, and then the heat that comes off that is converted into steam that they use at the ethanol plant. And it's a public-private partnership, and that company wanted five and a half million dollars worth of limits, so they buy an umbrella on top of it to meet that requirement.
Thank you.
And I brought along some more of those comparisons, if you all want them.
Question, you know, you had said you had no information to go off of from our previous, well, not necessarily from our previous insurance company, but what our requirements were. Why weren't those based off of our previous insurance coverage that we had?
Well, what Murma offers is one set of limits and deductibles and things for all members. We do have one option for bigger towns that want a higher deductible. So, regardless of what you put in your bid specs, this is what I would have presented. But when you're comparing coverages among normal commercial carriers, it would be a good idea to have bid specs, so you can do more of an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yeah, I was just curious, because we had the comparison between the two bids, but we didn't have a comparison between our previous carrier that, I don't know, I guess we have used.
We, we got that.
Yeah, that was...
Happy sent that out the Friday prior to the meeting. Yeah. We have that information.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, you have this, and I've copied it a little bigger and taped it together, so I could follow it along. This was NPR, which was your prior carrier, NPR renewal offer, and one, two, three, the four different Tokyo Marine options.
Yeah, I think my...
And I got that from the city. I'd assume that Lakeland put that together, Happy might have put it together, I don't know.
I think not that good. I don't mean that you say it.
And for the, when I talked about, so when I did the coverage comparison, I think last Wednesday, before Thursday's meeting, I used the information that was on that sheet compared to our coverage, put this together. And last week, you all asked about your cyber liability, and I didn't have much detailed information for you, so I did a summary sheet for you, I sent that to Happy Friday morning, I think, and then I went ahead and printed off a copy of the sixty-one-page policy, if anybody's bored there.
Thank you for the summary.
Welcome to look through it.
Matthew, do you have any idea how often your members take control of, or take advantage of the loss control visits, the employment helpline, those kinds of services?
So, loss control visits, we schedule those ourselves.
Okay.
And we average five point three per member each year.
That's right, I thought we did mention that, yeah.
Everybody makes sure they get the firearm simulator down, because they like that a lot.
Okay.
Couple of them want it twice a year, but we try not to do that too often. One thing that's nice is, when we bring that down, if we run the council through it, or you all watch the officers go through it, couple of them, you get a little better idea of what they go through. You know, it's a little better understanding, because we don't want you doing ride-alongs with them. And then sometimes we open that up to like the Chamber of Commerce and other interested parties, so they can have an idea of what your officers go through. The HR helpline, I'd say, association-wide, they probably give five or six calls a week. It runs for about four thousand dollars a month. I can't remember what we're paying, it's so much per six minutes.
The association's billed according to the amount of usage by the members.
Yeah, and I get carbon copied on all those, so I know if there's something going on where we need to assist the city. where we need to assist the city. So, and that's another difference. When you're with Mirma, you know, we're a risk pool, we're nonprofits, so we all have a vested insurance of making sure that our city's run in the safest manner possible to help reduce our claims. So we're involved all the time, a lot of the time. If you want a company where you just write a premium check and you only see them when a claim shows up, you need to stay with who you've got. But if you want to be involved and do the things, you know, that's the kind of member that we want. What kind of questions do you have? Surely you've got at least one more, don't you?
I've got one more.
Okay.
You know, when you talk about this coverage passing from you on to another underwriter, you mentioned Travelers. Just, you'd understand a little bit more about that, how, when, and?
Okay. So today, we've got a five hundred thousand dollar SIR, self-insured retention. So Mirma pays the first five hundred thousand out of our funds on property claims. If we have a claim that is over two hundred and fifty thousand, we have to put Travelers on notice. If it's going to get into their layer, then they become involved in the claim. They reimburse Mirma for the additional costs above our SIR. So your contract is with the association. You don't have a contract specifically with Travelers or any of our other excess insurers. What it means, if there's a big claim, then they will want to have their own engineers come out and take a look at it, or the way it actually works, we agree on an engineer to come out and take a look at it, and things like that. So we're the ones that are dealing with them, and you all are dealing with us.
How many other carriers are there?
We have Midwestern Forest Mutual on Warcom. They're in, it's close to Chesterfield, if not in Chesterfield, on forty in St. Louis. We use Genesis. They are actually, I think, based out of Connecticut on our liability coverage. We use Travelers Boiler, which is different than Travelers on our boiler machinery coverage. Travelers, the way that we have our excess property tiered, Travelers picks up the first twenty-five million, and then we have seven or eight different insurers that are on the twenty-five million to a hundred million layer, and they're on a percentage basis. Some of them have like thirty-three percent of that seventy-five million, some have as small as seven and a half percent. And those will vary a little each year as to what percentage they take and what carriers we use. Our standard is they all have to be A minus, A-vest rated, and for years they've all been A or better. You haven't ever gotten into the A minus. And those function the same way as property does, as far as their involvement, except on liability claims. They really don't come down and inspect anything. It's all, you know, depositions and lawsuits and whatnot.
That does bring up another question, and if I have one more.
You've got as many as your cohorts will let you ask.
You know, we contract out with our water and sewer services. You know. I guess what coverage is required or is done differently when you do that? You know, like on a Hannibal water liability thing, so.
So, we could have, like, and see what your contract calls for. You are probably indemnifying them for certain things, and they're probably indemnifying you for certain things. It's a mutual hold-harmless agreement, kind of arrangement, more than likely. So Mirma protects the interests of the city, so we cover essentially everything that the city is liable for, except for things that are specifically excluded. So if you're wanting specific examples, if, who, do they, they treat the water, and they distribute the water, and they maintain the lines? So, let's make it simple. Who does shut-offs?
Dating.
Dating, okay. So if somebody calls City Hall and says, you know, leaving town for the winter, I go to Arizona, shut off my water, and if the City Hall tells Alliance to shut off the water, and in the spring, when the keep come back from Arizona, they find that the water never got shut off, and their water lines flood, broke, and their houses flooded, then we are going to expect Alliance to take care of that suit. If Alliance did not, we would still protect the city, but then we would subjugate against Alliance and try and get essentially all our members' monies back on that suit. If it's something that you all did wrong, like, let's say your water lines were in bad shape, and Alliance was telling you for years and years you needed to fix them, and you all, as a board, said, yeah, we're fine. And one of the water lines bursts and floods somebody's house, one of the mains, then that would probably come back on the city, in which we would defend.
Well, I guess the couple we've been involved in is a sewer backup.
So, yeah, they're the worst. Nobody wants their own sewage in their house, much less forty-four hundred other people's. So sewer backups are typically caused by root buildup, or excessive INI, or a combination of the two. It would really depend who was at fault for the sewer backup, depending on how the coverage would trigger. Again, if the city was at fault, we defend the city on sewer backup claims. If we feel that Alliance was responsible for it, then we will subjugate against them. Let's say you all set goals where they're to clean sewer lines every six months, because everybody knows where the problem areas are. Here they got flags in them that you get debris settled in, or you get roots that come in and you don't have them lined. If you told Alliance they had to do that, and they failed in that duty, then that would be their fault, so we would want them to pick up that claim. If they were telling you, you know, your lines are crumbling, we got a big crack down the middle of it, and it's ninety-year-old clay, and you still tell them, no, we're not gonna give you money to fix it, and that main collapses, that would be more likely the city's problem. The worst thing is, if it's neither of your fault, we're going to tell your homeowner, who's your citizen, he's gonna come in here and yell at you all, that the city is not liable for that claim, because the city didn't do anything wrong that caused it. And usually you will have us come down and deliver that message to them, but then we get in our car and go home, and they see you all at the grocery store and things like that, so. I know exactly how these situations work. This is all I've done for the last twenty-eight years. You all are a unique town, but you've got common characteristics to other towns, I would imagine.
Any other questions? You have anything to add to the closing statement?
I think I've talked enough.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Sure thing. Not far at all. A lot closer than Kenet.
Appreciate it. Good girl at the back door of somebody's superstitions.
Thanks a lot, thank you very much, sir.
All right, bye-bye, guys.
See ya.
There you go. Got a lot more information now.
He knows his stuff.
Where's someone else? I wish Mike would ask.
You have the coverage.
He kept opening his mouth, but you were right there, you were right there.
Hello, hello. Hello. Feel like I should have to order some pizza, Steve. Yeah?
Wait afterward.
Yeah. I'll call pizza.
Well, first of all, we just want to say thank you for coming. We don't have any eggs in the car, and we're not writing letters to the editors. If you go a different direction, we're here to support the city. And I think our purpose is to try to inform you more about what our program is, answer any questions you have. We are not going to, by any means, discredit Mirma's coverages or their program at all. We just want to maybe touch on what our, what our differences are, so you can maybe pursue that, and at least when we all leave, we'll have a better education of what this is about. That's really why we're here. So I hope, again, thanks for coming, and, and we do appreciate it.
Yeah, well, again, thank you. I know this is not easy to come back and, and talk insurance again, but really today was, this evening's about reiterating and reemphasizing some of what we feel are different program highlights in what we offered. What I wanted to do is pass out kind of a one-pager that, that really summarizes, again, what we feel are the most notable differences between the two programs, and then certainly we can kind of dig deeper on each one of them. Pass them on that side. So I'm just gonna kind of go down the list here, and again, we pulled out what we feel are most notable between the two programs. You know, we're both A-rated carriers. As I had mentioned, we're offering a fully insured program. We're not offering a self-funded pool. So if we have a, a big loss in one part of the state, you know, it's not gonna erode any limits, it's not gonna compromise the city's, you know, liability and, and set exposure limits on their own policy, and I think that's important to, to recognize, you know, so that's a big difference there. One thing I didn't hit on is HCC is in a position to offer a three-year rate guarantee, assuming there's not issues with profitability. And I can give you more information around that, but that's very rare in our industry to see a three-year rate lock. And that does insulate you from, you know, the rising marketplace. You know, the market is hardening, we're seeing auto go up, we're seeing umbrellas go up. You know, with everything going on right now, you know, that's gonna certainly impact the rates as well. So that is something that they're able to offer. You guys have had solid track history, and, and that's really the reason why they're in a position to do so. And then really, one of the bigger areas here is on our liability limits. We, we talked about, HCC is offering an umbrella, a five million umbrella that sits over the underlying limits. You know, and you talk about immunity and, and how that works, you know, it's proven that there are certain areas where the, the city would not be immune to the sovereign immunity limits. You know, there's case laws in Missouri that, that have proven that. I know on Mirma's proposal, there's, they had, you know, EPLI, Employment Practice Liability, was one they didn't put an asterisk next to, that's not protected by sovereign immunity. So the reality is, you can pierce that, you know, that alleged immunity that you feel you have. You kind of get into the proprietary functions versus the governmental functions, and that's where they start really kind of dissecting the two and, and determining whether it truly would apply. So with our liability limits, you know, we, we're providing effectively six million dollars of, of limit for each insuring agreement. That's on your DNO, your EPLI, your auto, your general liability, your workers' comp liability, you know, that umbrella sits over everything. So it's providing a significant amount of coverage over that sovereign immunity limit. And again, we feel that, that will, you know, cover the city in areas where they may not be covered now. So I'm, I'm gonna pause there, any, any questions around that? I know that, that tends to be something that tax districts that we work with want more information around.
Do you, do you frequently seek claims of that size? I mean, how often is that, are those occurring?
Well, fortunately, we haven't personally. There's been some in St. Louis. There's certainly cases around, you know, DNO or public official liability is an area you're seeing more activity in. I hope that the tax districts we work with, we don't have to test, you know, the, the sovereign immunity limits. So not personally, but certainly I can, you know, pull up cases that, where it did blow through those limits and that municipality was exposed. You know, I work with some larger fire districts in St. Louis, and that's always the big concern is, you know, how do we get more limit around the EPLI, the DNO? You know, these board members, they, they really want to make sure they're protected, and I don't blame them. So that's where we find the umbrella to sit on top of that underlying limit really comes in, in play. And then going down, you know, cyber liability, you know, that's a huge emerging exposure, not even emerging, it is an exposure. We're seeing more and more of that. We're offering a five million cyber liability policy that is robust, it has, you know, the insuring agreements that we would put against any cyber policy out there. We have three million approved, and then we have up to five million with additional questions on the application. If you opted to stay with the three million, and I highlight that below, there is a discount. So bottom line, you know, cyber is something we're seeing more and more of. I actually printed out a case study on a city in, in the Atlanta area that really talks about the financial impact it had on that particular city. And, you know, it's scary stuff. You get into ransomware and, and stuff I don't even know about, but forensics, you know, you gotta bring in a forensics team to figure out what happened. You know, the expenses associated with the breach can add up quickly. And, you know, we write a lot of cyber, we've been doing so for some time now, and I'm not trying to discredit what was offered on the other program, but five hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of cyber liability. You can blow through that very easily. So five million is, is certainly a, a lot of limit, and if you felt that was too much, we could take advantage of some premium savings and, and go down to three million. And ours is approved, you know, there isn't subject to application. So I think that's noteworthy. And, you know, kind of jumping down below, we talked about the assessment that we can do at no cost. You know, I think that's important, that not only we provide, provide insurance, but how do we proactively address potential issues down the road? And this, you know, this assessment would really afford us that opportunity, we have experts that would come in and do that, and they would show us where the deficiencies are, independent of the carrier. You know, we wouldn't want the carrier to see that, and then we can determine if we needed to make the appropriate, you know, changes or not. So I think that's important, to not only have insurance, but how do we, you know, prevent a claim from happening? So that's something that, you know, we certainly are big proponents of, is that assessment, and we can certainly coordinate that, facilitate that at no cost on behalf of the city.
Is that still a five thousand dollar deductible, or is it different on the, on the three, three million?
I'll check.
So maybe two, ten percent, just like.
So we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on the cyber for both five and three million, so if you wanted to go up.
It says five here, right?
For the cyber?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, now this, is this ours?
That's Mirma's.
That's Mirma's.
Well, that's not ours.
That's, yeah, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect, yeah.
No, that's wrong.
Yeah, this isn't, you know, this isn't.
I don't know where they got that.
Do you see anything else?
Well, we haven't seen that. That's another thing, we never, we've never done that with theirs to give to you. We, we didn't know that, we didn't know that was being done.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, obviously, we could sit here and throw darts all night long.
I don't think so.
And, and we're not.
We're not into that game.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do that, you know. We can look here. So, you know, you look at earthquake and I think you've got to note, they share a limit of earthquake. And it's very misleading how they state it there. You could have an earthquake somewhere else and it would erode the limit completely in a matter of minutes. And I think it's, and I know that for a fact because we work with the same pool that they buy their reinsurance from. So bottom line, you know, you can't look at those limits and say that you have the full amount because at any given time, those could be eroded through another member. So I think you need to really understand how that works. We can buy additional flood, I'm sorry, additional earthquake. Where the city has its own earthquake, we can get up to, I ran a quote, for $10,000, we can buy another $6 million of earthquake. You know, if we lowered the cyber down and reengineered a few other things, we're still below that and you have a set earthquake amount. But again, that earthquake limit is shared when you get into a pool and it can very, very easily be eroded. So that's something different. Let's see here. The cyber liability, we have a $2,500 deductible. We're going to talk about the services there. Drone liability, that is included. So we can, I can make sure we update that. And then, you know, on our replacement costs on the property, you know, I see they have 120% scheduled amount. So we have a blanket replacement cost, no co-insurance, agreed value. So what that means, if we have a building that goes down and maybe we only had it at $1 million and it's, you know, it's going to cost $1 million and a half, we have $1 million and a half of coverage. You know, we can rob Peter to pay Paul. You know, that's written on a blanket for that reason. It takes that uncertainty of being underinsured out of the mix. Now, we have a total of $20,521,000. Again, city's limit. You know, you could go over here and say Myrmus' got $100 million total. If that's eroded, you might not have any limit. You know, so I think that's the big difference there. So I wouldn't get caught up with 120% because again, we have, in scenarios where we might be underinsured, we have the ability to go in and tap from that $20 million limit to offset that. So that's, you know, obviously a big deal there. Other than that, you know, we can talk more on the services, but I don't see anything. I know that there's some deductible differences and I'm not discounting deductibles, but, you know, we're in the business of protecting, you know, globally and big losses. You know, I get when you're looking at your homeowner's policy and you see a $1,000 deductible versus a 5. But, you know, I would take $5 million of liability limit over a lower deductible, in my opinion. And I think that everyone would agree that, you know, we need to protect the city for catastrophic scenarios and that was our approach. There has to be some sort of, you know, self-insured component, you know, from a deductible stance. You know, and I know we have some different deductibles from 1,000 and we have up to 10 on the sewer deductible. But the reality is, you know, you see that on risk management programs. You know, to be able to get bigger limits, more coverage when the catastrophe comes into play. So, you know, another highlight, you know, we talk about the replacement cost on emergency vehicles and equipment. And Pam, I'm going to put you on the spot here. So I know we had a loss on a piece of equipment and it was paid on actual cash value. If it would have been on replacement cost, it would have certainly paid out a lot more. Is that fair to say?
It was significant too. Was it $50,000, I think, right?
It was the ultra-violent system that was replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be more than that.
It was like over 100. I mean, the total replacement cost was like over $100,000.
Yeah. So, you know, in that scenario, if HCC would have been underwriting it, there would have been a replacement cost feature that would have kicked in and provided full replacement cost versus that depreciated value. Same with the emergency vehicles. And there can be a big difference there, you know. And it's very uncommon to see that type of valuation on in the marine, meaning the equipment as well as vehicles. It's typically actual cash value. So that's not, you know, abnormal to see, you know, the ACV. It's the opposite to see replacement cost and HCC is willing to do that. And that could be tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference if you had a loss. So again, we think that's a significant highlight of our program versus Myrmus'. And then we get into risk control services and we'll hit on that below. We're in a position to hit risk control on several different, you know, buckets as far as how we address it. We can utilize HCC. We can utilize Bituminous Bitco on the work comp. And then Sedwicke as our third-party loss control. We can bring in all those different resources that will give you a more tailored solution around your risk control needs. And we think that's important. And I'm not trying to discredit the carrier, but at the end of the day, they have their own agenda. And they're going to certainly push that upon their policyholders. We see it every day. We have third-party loss control. We can bring in Sedwicke who works for you guys and we can be as transparent and upfront with them and craft, you know, game plan that's going to really, you know, address the deficiencies you have. And I think that's important. It's not going to go in your insurance file and impact pricing on the renewal. So if you go below there, you know, some enhanced risk control services. We talked a little bit about legal counsel and HR services. You know, we have folks that you can talk to on our dime. We pay for those services. You pick up the phone. We can bring an HR person onsite. I know we talked a little bit about that. We have state-of-the-art interactive training for law enforcement that we can bring in. We have, there's like integrated training systems out there that we can connect you with regarding policies, procedures. And that kind of goes with the Training Center Safety Library that we have access to for you as well. So we feel like we're very capable to bring you high-level loss control services that are going to strengthen the city's, you know, ability to continue the solid loss history and certainly, you know, mitigate future losses down the road. And we're constantly adding to that. You know, as an independent agent, you know, we're very fortunate to be able to go out and bring in additional services at any time we need to. You know, we're not, you know, limited with what we can do. We have a lot of flexibility. So if there's something that we need to, you know, bring to the table, we can do that. If we feel it's going to strengthen the city's ability to manage risk and claims, then we're all for it. And I think that's very notable. Going down, we covered the cyber. Something else we didn't talk about, you know, the health insurance does include volunteer accidental death and disbursement, dismemberment. And I think that's certainly something you could see pair up with your workers' comp on the volunteer firefighters. And so if they were injured, not only are they going to, medical bill is going to be paid under the workers' comp, but we have that benefit through the health insurance that would come in and supplement their income or potentially loss of life. So we can very easily tweak those limits if need be, but that is included right now through the city's health insurance.
What does that mean, first 28 days? What does it do after that?
So basically, this is like, kind of think of it as a short-term disability type of policy. It's going to cover them for the 28 days while they're out. You know, in theory, you know, they're going to, you know, they're going to have other jobs. They're going to have other potential means there. But this policy, again, we can re-engineer how it's set up, but this is the current, you know, terms that we have on it. It's written through Gladfelder, through a specific fire program that we work with, through VFIS.
So this is additional coverage?
That's already included through your health insurance that.
Right, over and above the work comp.
Correct. So when you talk about volunteer, you know, you typically wouldn't have an indemnity component. You know, if someone's injured, their medical, their health is going to, you know, the medical insurance would kick in. But there would be that gap for the indemnity. So that's where this would come into play. So there's, you know, a little bit of, you know, they've worked together in a lot of ways.
So we have a VFIS program that we're using now. And then another carrier, I can't remember what it is, on the equipment. Do we not need those extra coverages?
So the VFIS one, this is the one we're referencing. Correct, yeah. We just included that. If you look next to it up top, it says included in benefit package. So we're just kind of highlighting that because it does kind of come into play with your workers' comp when you get into volunteer coverage. So we kind of flew through that, but hopefully this gives you a little bit of color on some of the differences that we feel are, you know, significant between the two. You know, and I'm going to, I talked a little bit about this at the end of the meeting last week. You know, we are independent. And if a market gets hard or gets swirly, you know, we can call an audible and go a different direction. We're very well represented in the marketplace and I think having options is good for our policyholders. It doesn't limit them. It doesn't put them in a bad situation if all of a sudden the carrier has a bad year and now they're taking the rate because of that. We have flexibility and I think it's important to know that we, you know, we advocate on our policyholders' behalf. We don't work for the insurance carrier, you know, and that's, that's good. I don't want to work for the insurance carriers. So we are fortunate to represent virtually every mutual, every regional and national carrier out there as well as self-funded captive opportunities. So we can explore a lot of different options on your behalf. And we can do that every year. We can show you, just like we showed Pam and Happy, where we went and give you an idea of where the market is. Because it's ever-changing. And I can tell you that it's hardening. You know, the market's hardening. We're going to see more and more rate being passed down, you know, in the next few years. And we feel like we're positioned to help insulate our policyholders from taking, you know, that significant rate.
Craig, one question on this three-year rate guarantee. You know, with you talking about, you know, increases coming and stuff. You know, how does that work and how favorable loss history is?
Yeah, and I can, I can give you an actual form that shows exactly how it works from HCCI. I can email that to everyone tonight. But it's basically first year, if you're under, I think it's a 35% loss ratio, then your trigger is for the next two years. And it kind of goes that route. And so, you know, it's not, hey, we have 100% three-year rate lock today. If we have a terrible year, then they're not going to be willing to do that. But what it does do is if you have a good year, you know you're not taking any rate. You know, they can't increase your premiums. You know, even if the market is hard, even if HCC's members have, you know, policyholders have bad years, you're not going to take, you know, the brunt of that.
So is that spread out over all the members or just our exposure?
Just you. Again, this is solely for you guys. Because it's a fully insured product. We're not, you know, there's no tie to anyone else. It's, you're solely dependent on your history.
So that's our goal or that is our thing to work towards is controlling our own losses instead of keeping our own rates and check.
So I did want to add, you've had a great run on your loss ratio, as Pam will attest to. So the city's done very well.
Yeah. Yeah, and I can, I'll be upfront, you know, they don't offer that to all of their policyholders. They offer it to the folks they feel are best in class. And you don't see three-year rate locks for obvious reasons, you know. So, you know, it's certainly not pie in the sky. You guys have performed well and I think it's very achievable to lock the rates in. And that doesn't mean we have to stay with them. You know, we can continue to explore other markets and always call an audible. Because again, we're not married to HCC or Bitco or anyone, NPR. I mean, we have options. But it does provide a little bit of, you know, certainty around, you know, what could happen down the road with rates. Any questions? Pizza's coming in about 10 minutes. Yeah. Well, we sincerely appreciate you guys revisiting this. We understand this is not the norm. But again, we really wanted to make sure we highlighted what we feel are big differences, you know, between the policies. And hopefully we're able to put it, you know, in an illustration that does that.
I mean, and this board has not had the opportunity to, this is our first time going through this.
Sure.
Arthur just took care of it and he said something up and Happy come in on the back end of it and just followed through with it. So I think in the future, we're going to be thinking a little bit different, you know, to be in more of a home. Some of your boards, they really don't care.
Yeah.
This board cares about a lot of things.
Well, yeah.
Because they care about the people that live in the city because that's who they represent. We all represent.
Absolutely. Well, I echoed Ed's comments about, you know, whatever direction you decide to go. We respect that, whatever's best for the city. And, you know, we again appreciate the opportunity to, at least again, reemphasize some of the differences. So we understand that the duty that you have, you know, as elected officials and respect that. And again, we appreciate you guys hearing us out.
I have one. One of the things that's always tough about insurance and stuff is making sure you are covered and relying on somebody to advise you. I mean, and realize you're in the businesses of insurance and to sell more coverage. But that's always been a key to me is being able to compare, you know, maybe somebody in the area or to just advising to make sure we have the proper limits and liabilities based on, you know, business you may do with other towns or whatever. But I mean, that advisement to me is important. To be able to rely on that person to say you have enough coverage.
Benchmarking is huge. We do a lot of benchmarking and trying to always be ahead of the game, understanding where the losses are. I'm going to leave this with everyone that really highlights that. I think it does a good job of saying, here's an example of a large cyber breach and the exact, you know, cost that came into play and what this particular municipality had to deal with. You know, it's real. It's happening. I mean, I'm sure everyone's aware of things around here potentially, you know.
How big, oh, don't mean to interrupt. How big of a city was that?
Um, gosh, go ahead, no bad. Can't remember the population or?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Not that it doesn't happen to be small.
Yeah, this is Atlanta's municipal government was hit on it.
That's okay. I just thought it was.
It's Atlanta.
City of Atlanta.
Yeah, this is, yeah. So I mean, obviously a big, yeah. I don't know the population, but it was a big claim. So I'll leave that here with you. But yeah, to Bob's point, you know, I think we're constantly trying to make sure that we're in line with where our policyholders need to be. You know, when I got in the business almost 20 years ago, people carried a million-dollar umbrella. Now it's 5 billion, 10 billion. You know, it's just, it's more expensive nowadays. Claims are more expensive, you know. So I think that's a great point, you know. We're constantly making sure that we're ahead of the game and providing expert, you know, advice around limits and policy terms. Did I have enough? If I didn't, I can email that.
I just need a meg pile.
I didn't want to kill too many trees.
I didn't blow this up.
You guys got the good paper too. I don't typically print.
I don't think 20 pounds.
That's like 40 pounds.
Yeah. That's right.
And thank you very much.
Well, thank you all again. Sure appreciate it. Very nice. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Well, thank you everyone. Have a nice, blessed evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody need to take a restroom break or anything before we talk?
Water break?
Water break, yeah.
Let's have some water.
Don't we have a dress code, something about those?
Dress code.
With our own loss and that three-year guarantee is?
One of the big, the things that probably sold most of the group is at the end of that meeting, all the benefits of with MyRMA and having them come, I talked to Happy about this, having them come in and, you know, and I, and I do that where I work, we have a, our work comp carrier comes in once a year and does an audit and lets me see where I'm at and what I need to do to improve. That's great, but we, we should be doing that ourselves probably. Now, I'm not telling you we need to hire a safety director to go around and look because what's nice about it is mostly what we have is, is our biggest risk, I think, is our, well, the big risk is our police department, but our street department. Those folks are out on the streets, they're in and out of dangerous situations, you know, and, and we're not the safest. I don't think in looking at and, and we've been very fortunate, but you can't be too safe, you know. And that's where you have your losses in that. You, you have one major malfunction in that department, somebody gets a leg cut off with a chainsaw.
Yeah.
Then you're, so we can do a good job of, of talking to and adding enhancements and things too, you know. And you could always, and I don't know what they'd offer, if they could bring an outside consultant in to do a, a safety thing, even if we had to pay for it, I think it'd be worth it, you know, I don't, you know, so it's my two cents on that, you know. And that's why you save it on insurance is by not having losses.
Yeah.
You know, so, and that's, and then you're not only you're saving on that, but you're saving your people too. And then you're telling and showing your people, hey, we care.
Yeah.
You know, but that might be one way, Paul, you talk about safety incentives and stuff, you know.
Yeah.
Why can't we throw our street crew a bone every now and then if they operate, you know, I mean, it's proven by Mississippi Lime, that pays off.
Well, I'm, I'm not a proponent of paying somebody to be safe.
I did say pay.
So, I'm going to say I've been in safety for twenty years because what happens is, is what happens when you do stuff like that, I like, I like to, I love lessons learned and near misses. And you'd be surprised, every one of you, if you just, if, if every one of us has a near miss, or I call them near hits because you nearly got hit by something and you, you avoided it. And it could be in your vehicle, it could be walking down the street, but those are things that you learn from. And, and people will tend to, when they have safety bonus, and I'm not here to preach about that, but when they have those bonuses, they'll, they'll tend to, well, I can get a good bonus if I don't report this. You don't want that happening, you want to learn, you want to learn from your mistakes, you know, so. But you are right, Bob, it's, and, and there are incentives out there that you can give people that, hey, it's worth working for, you know. And it helps us and it helps everybody on the long, on the long run because we, we have, our exposure goes down, our insurance rates go down and we have more money to, to work with and to spend, so.
But you know, you've seen the jackets from Mississippi Lime Safety Award.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, I mean, those.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's for departments or even a, a, you know, a recognition dinner or something, simple stuff that goes a long way. I understand that, but I'm just saying those are things that we can do ourselves, you know. And Happy's talked to me, he's going to put some things in place. He's been into other places and seen what's, seen what we're doing. So, he does what?
I remember saying that.
Yeah, I remember saying that, remember we talked about that? You said, you know, like, you know, hard hats and earplugs.
Yeah, that kind of thing.
Little simple stuff like that, but if you think about it, whenever in, in, if, 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 Bob, you're hearing, and you wouldn't do it to yourself, but if you have a hearing loss, it's just like with, it's the craziest thing. Wherever you are, you, you have that loss, that's who pays for that. So, that tells me that what we do at our company is when we make a new hire on that physical, we do a, we check hearing. And then we know actually we got something to go from. If you have no reporter, that those are simple things and a hearing test is not that much money, but that should be something that we need to be doing on any employee in our, in a, if it works for the city. Then you have that, you have a baseline and then you limit your exposure and what it's going to cost you on the back end. So, those are different things that we need really to be thinking about.
So, what's our plan, Mayor, concerning our insurance?
Well, I just got some input from mine. Suzie wants to sleep on it and she had some other questions, so I, I, it's up to you, it's up to y'all, you know. I don't, but we have to, by the end of that, that the last meeting of this month, we have to, it's going to be on the agenda. One of these companies and we're going to have to have two readings to get it going. Or we decide tonight who's going to be on the agenda for next week and we do a reading and then like we normally do. That's up to y'all, so.
So, would you guys consider our subject matter experts?
Business owners in town, perhaps Pam, who has administered the program on some level in the past. Maybe Happy, who's got experience with MyRMA, like, I, I know you guys shy away from that because you want us to make a decision and hand it to you, but I mean.
And I, and you know what, rather than we do that and because it was a statement made that was made to me that, well, Happy likes this, you know, I don't want to put these folks on the line like that.
True, but I, as a board member, I wouldn't want to hogtie them and say, hey, live with my decision, you administer the program.
No, I want to, we want, this group wants to be involved in this decision. We're going to do it different next year.
Sure.
We are going to hogtie them.
I agree.
I'm not going to put them, I'm not going to put them in that position.
It should be the board's.
And they'll have to live with the decision this board and, and you know what, they'll do really well.
So, we don't want your input, so.
You don't have it.
Not being disrespectful at all.
I'm sipping my glass.
No.
I don't need an opinion, but how, so how long were we in a pool?
We have been within PR probably, I think it's five and eight or ten years.
Do you have any idea how much the rates have fluctuated? Have we ever, I mean, we've never compared with regular commercial insurance.
Well, and we had to be, we had to put NPR on notification that we were going out for bids. And we did that because our broker asked us, you know, they had some type of feeling that we needed to get other quotes.
Sure.
They just had, and that's why it was, why we had to notify them within thirty days that we were going to be going out for other bids. And I'm sorry, I can't explain why. Do you know why?
I don't know exactly why, but I understand, I think we were looking at health insurance, we were probably looking at this coverage as well. It may have been something that Lakeland approached with, with Martin and decided to look at it. One thing I will say is that we need, the sooner we make a decision, then your carrier can come in and start collecting data. There's a lot of stuff that we have to pass on, a lot of information about our employees, about our payroll, about our equipment.
Our properties.
Whoever, whoever.
Because they're both either new companies.
Right.
Pam, so, did the other company quote us?
If they are, gave us, that was on that sheet.
Right, that's what I thought.
It was liar.
I don't think you have to notify anybody.
Yes.
Yeah, we were.
Of any quote, you have to notify them with cancellation thirty days.
We had to notify them that we were going out for bid.
We have to notify them sixty days in advance.
Because it's a pool.
They have no, they were looking at that because.
So, the NPR was a pool also?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what, why I asked, how long have you been in a pool? But it's been the MPR pool for so long.
Yeah, and I can get when we went with them.
I, I was just curious. No, that's all right. I think, you know, I think personally I would like to hear from some of these member cities, maybe Not least Prairie, don't give them a call, but it would be kind of nice to get some, to get some reference information and see some of these that have been in it for a while, maybe somebody who hasn't been in too long and just get their opinions.
Or would you rather call Rala in Wentzville and find out why?
That too, that too, yeah. And I mean, that, who knows to him for giving us that information? But I think if the majority of the people around the table think that if we go with MyRMA, it's probably going to be, especially because the, the premium price or assessment price is higher than with the Lakeland plan. If we think that for one year, it's not worth doing because we may change our mind, then I guess, if that's what everybody wants to do, but then I think we got to make, we got to make the commitment that next year, well before this time next year, we have a committee, we come up with those priorities, like Matthew was saying, and figure out what we need and what we want. And I, I think part of that should be, we look at our history, what our claims have been, how bad they could have been, if that's possible to look at. But without really having that information, I don't know that we're going to, I'm not going to be a hundred percent confident in my choice, but I definitely see how MyRMA, if done right, could save us money in the long run.
It's not an easy task because it's an apples to pears comparison.
Right, because MyRMA's got, here, here's your, here's your plan. And there are some things on the MyRMA plan that I like the cyber. I would definitely appreciate higher coverage with that, but we can't pick and choose our coverage levels.
Yeah, that's.
So, I mean, if everybody around the table agrees now, then why, why put it off?
I mean, I, I'm looking at the four thousand dollars, that's a big factor.
Which four thousand dollars?
Four thousand dollars from Lakeland, but it's less than the MyRMA.
The premium.
The premium.
Right.
Even with all the higher deductibles.
You know, that's a.
Yeah, those deductibles are a monster.
And that's why I'd kind of like to know our claim history.
I mean.
But I realize that's a lot of information, I probably should ask where we could go.
We had some claim history on some vehicles this year. I mean, the ultraviolet system, that was the biggest claim that we had.
And right there alone, with this program with Lakeland, would you save how much?
Oh, man.
A bunch. Yeah, it's a hundred thousand dollar.
They're not huge, not huge. We haven't had huge claims by all means and on the work comp part either, we haven't, haven't had work, big huge work comp claims either. Not on what will probably.
To dovetail to what Suzie's saying, my, my big consternation and concern is the fact that I don't think as a city that we know what we want. It's like when we go out for insurance for ourselves, I don't know what the hell I want, I just rely on somebody else telling me. And I like MyRMA because this is their only business, with this, in this respect, this is their only business. This is their gig that they know from experience. So, they have a better idea of what we need and what we want as opposed to us having to hire people to come in and consult and do this and the other thing to figure out what we want to have at the end of the day. I just feel more comfortable, right? If we are going to go, I'm, I'm just saying, if we are going to go with Lakeland, then I need to know what exactly we're going to ask for next year, not this all over the place, I can get you that, I can get you this, I can get you this. I'd like to know because we, it's like anything in insurance, you, you need to know what you want, what you want to pay for, what your deductibles are. And I don't think, and I don't think we know at all. And I think that I feel like MyRMA is strong because that's their whole profession, taking care of cities.
Yeah, but I mean, that's all Lakeland does also, is insurance.
But, but they, but this does city, these do just cities.
Right.
And I just feel that, I'm not saying I'm not.
MyRMA has much more skin in the game than.
Much more.
And I think that to, to your point about us controlling our costs, well, MyRMA is trying to get all of their members to control the costs.
Which helps us and they bring people out.
It helps us, but it can hurt us.
But they also.
Because they can. You're not all paid for.
And in addition to.
You exceed the limits and that's it.
But they also, but they're also proactive too, that's our point I wanted to make. MyRMA is proactive to keep the pool down and the cost down. They, they, they're out there doing it. We have to request and ask and all this other stuff.
I, I think we can be proactive ourselves.
I haven't seen it yet, I haven't seen it yet.
Well, I, I, I beg to differ, you heard the man say that this city in the, in the last.
Well, let me put this way then.
They did, they've been doing very well.
Then the Alderman, I's and Alderman.
Yes, sir.
Don't know what we need as a city. Maybe that's because they've been kept out of the loop on this process, but I'm nervous about that. And I just feel comfortable with someone who knows it and has skin in the game and this is their industry, they're not-for-profit. It's a pool, they take care of each other.
I would counter that a little bit, not to discredit what you're saying, but I think a benefit of Lakeland in respects of what you're saying is they live in the city that they're about to, you know, if we go with them, they're living in the city. So, they have access to what we have access to in knowing.
Yeah, but what happens with Lakeland is that we have to bring in somebody from St. Louis, we have to ask for this, we have to ask for everything. MyRMA is going to proactively send people in regardless of whether we want them here or not, which is beneficial for the city.
And even though the salesmen are local, the insurance, the companies are not and.
I, I understand that, but as far as like know-how about what the city needs, they can, they can know it just as much as we know it.
They probably know more than we do.
MyRMA could just be guessing based off of what they see in other cities and that might not necessarily apply.
They didn't lose cities for no reason.
Yeah.
They left them for a reason and stuff. But doesn't Lakeland do the county?
Yes, I'm pretty sure they do.
Think they do and stuff, but I mean.
They had been doing, the county was, the county was with NPR as well. Because when, when they would come down and do visits with us, they would visit with the county as well. They were not, are they renewed with them, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd just like to explore some opportunities between a joint venture, you know, because we all can't be insurance experts in every, you know.
A joint venture with you?
With the county, you know, why can't we meet together?
That's interesting.
More cohesion to.
Wow, that's an interesting idea.
Get along and stuff, but I mean, I've seen.
And share, and spread the pain.
Well, I don't know if we can do that.
Oh, I'd like to know if we could.
You know.
We'll discover.
You know, Gary, just for an example, right now, we've got a water tower out there because they're making the payments.
Oh, I hear you, I hear you.
You know, we need to work together.
That's a good point, yeah.
Sorry, guys, I need to keep this spring on tonight, sorry.
I don't know, I'm comfortable with Lakeland and I'm not going to change, I'm.
And I respect that, I'm just, I'm just.
What about you, uh, I mean, I went Lakeland, I thought the presentation was excellent.
You know, they have all of the people we want them to bring down here and all of the expertise. I mean, they sit there and set it and they pick up the tab, you know, I.
The, the logical approach, if, if you would have problems sleeping at night, and I, we do, sometimes we leave this pale.
I do.
Is if, if you're an advocate of MyRMA and you're having a hard time making a decision, we have to make a decision on tight timeframe.
We have time for it.
You might want to go Lakeland to buy yourself a year and you can't really feel bad about yourself. You can't beat yourself up about that because we got what we got. We didn't have time for it to us.
Yeah.
You got to buy time.
I, the last few years, I've been taking care of my parents' Medicare supplement and I deal with an independent broker and every year that independent broker shops their insurance with different carriers. And with the exception of this year, well, my mom passed away, but my dad is going to keep his same policy and stuff because all of the companies they went out and shopped with, just like what Lakeland can do, they found us the best rate. And of course, with Medicare supplements, all companies have to have the same coverage. There is no one better than the other one. Everything is identical and stuff, but they do that as an independent every year that I don't have to, you know. And, you know, because the coverage is the same, that's not the case here and stuff, but it's just easy to work with somebody like that. They call and they say, we've shopped it, this is what it is. I mean, their insurance people, we're not, I mean, we could dissect this thing to death and stuff, trying to figure out every little ins and outs and I'm telling you, it's not.
You have a better projective and perspective than we do here at business.
Well, you had to do it for thirty years.
So.
I think Jeff's got input too, right?
I think one of the things that you also look at is there are things that they're offering. We have a year to see if they offer them.
That's what you, that's what you were saying, that was a good point.
I mean, it's a, it's a point I'm making, but I hate, I hate to make that point because it's a, it's a weak position on this. I don't, I don't like making that point, but it is what it is. I don't have time to make a decision, I got to make a decision.
Yeah, here's a prime example, we thought MyRMA last time and stuff with the volunteer things had better coverage. Lo and behold, Lakeland's got better coverage because it exceeds the work comp and it pays out a twenty-five thousand dollar death benefit that MyRMA does.
And they were very good sports about seeing that spreadsheet. I commend them for not going through.
But I thought he said this was through the health insurance. This is not through what we're signing up, this is through the health insurance. We already have that.
We already have it.
And as long as we keep our health insurance with them, we are going to have that.
Yeah.
So, that's why I didn't understand why they kept that on there. That's how I understood. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Means nothing.
But this is already part of the health insurance, which I think the reason he did that was to show us that MyRMA was offering wasn't really needed.
Yeah.
But it is a different benefit.
Have we not heard enough from you, like you?
I actually just wanted to say something.
Um, I was just going to point out with the, with the costs, you know, taxpayer dollars, if we look at the renewal from NPR and the whole reason that we're. dollars, if we look at the renewal from NPR and the whole reason that we're readdressing this, NPR went up almost $3,000 in the renewal offer, um, and Lakeland's coming in pretty low, if $3,000 is average for what we could face as far as renewals in the future, you know, we're talking maybe $6,000 that we'd be saving, because they're offering a three year rate lock.
Yeah.
So if we go with Mike's idea of going with one year revisiting it, if we decide to keep our coverage with Lakeland, we're locked in for two more years, but we wouldn't have that luxury with MyRMA, we could be seeing another $3,000 increase on a plan that's already costing us more than Lakeland would.
And I hear what you're saying, I appreciate what you're saying, we just need to keep an eye on those deductibles.
Yeah.
And what we lock ourselves into, because one of those deductibles will wipe out all the cost savings.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
I know, and I, I think one thing that kinda threw me off is when Buck asked about like the cybersecurity deduct- deductible, and they said theirs was 2,500.
Yeah.
Well, the cheat sheet we had to go off of was 5,000, and that's not true, so I was getting a little confused, because the information MyRMA provided us on that spreadsheet was false.
Even if that malicious, it may scratch your head.
And, and, and I'm not calling it malicious, I'm just saying it was misleading for me and why it was kind of a toss-up, like 5,000, 5,000, that doesn't make me a difference, they've got this, so.
But we also got independent information from each one, and if you really looked at it, from what Happy sent us the Friday previous, that also had the NPR info and all of that info, then you could see that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we didn't have the information, I'm just saying we're looking in 20 different spots, and what was provided to us as a cheat sheet here wasn't actually a good cheat sheet.
One thing I will say, probably as we're getting ready to close up, is I really love this board, because you guys and gals are proactive, this is one of the only boards I've been on that actually want to have time and committees formed, so we don't have to be forced to make decisions and do a double vote and everything else, I'm uncomfortable doing that, and I, I mean, so if we're gonna go with Lakeland this time around, because we can get out in a year, I'm, I'm begging this board to please have this decided three months, four months before this.
Well, I would suggest what happens here, watch out for this.
More than lost.
Yeah, they're all up there in the lines.
And anyhow, uh.
I'm kidding, I shouldn't say that.
I would think that would be Happy's responsibility to put in his calendar when we need to start forming this committee and looking at it.
Good job, Mayor, thank you, get out, get out, get out!
Got that for the list.
But I, I have to go back to before we, we get comfortable with a decision, I don't, you had some opinions earlier, so I mean.
Well, I mean, the only thing with.
Oh, yeah, Jeff.
With MyRMA, if they're gonna do one-on-one training, send police stuff down, yeah, Lakeland has training, it's computer training.
But you know.
I consider it a computer and go do what I want and come back, and it still says identity.
I'll tell you right now, and we're, and looking at the workforce, and I do a lot of safety training, and I, I've sat in, in safety training meetings and, and read information, and you know what I've done, what the guys enjoy the most and what they do the most and get the most out of them myself, is online training, because it's for the, for, and for a millennial, it's perfect, even for my older guys, and bottom line is, it's, it's all about, as far as training is about accountability.
I think expedient.
Yeah, you account of that, that it shows they did it, how do you know they sat there?
For expedien- for expediency, it's better, but it's not better training.
Yeah.
Take it from me, for these distance learning with these kids with 40% less response rate, I think for police and this training, I, I'm an advocate for, in the first, present in the flesh, because I don't want my cops taught online.
You know, I asked Lakeland that exact question, because MyRMA made a point of it and stuff, he said they have the same simulators, the same program, you know, that they.
They said they do it for the county.
Then, then we should make a list of what MyRMA would provide, and then give that list to Lakeland and say, we want this in the next year to happen, when's it gonna happen? Because they're gonna have to call all these people and set up all this stuff themselves, which is great, okay, and it's cost us less, right, but they're not gonna do it unless we ask.
And maybe they're on notice, like, hey, uh, they're serious about selecting this, so we're on notice or sharp or pencil for.
Speaking of notice, my friend, if we're gonna stick with Lakeland, which is, I think that's where we're headed, right, I would love to see this training on PDs for professional development plans, I would love to see some of these, this training and the other training, you get 1% raise, this training, this training, and this training, and this training, maybe 2% raise, because this 3% for everybody has got to go.
Right, the only way you're gonna be able to control that, of course, you're gonna have.
And then we can justify it.
During working hours, and.
And our constituents who chew us out, we can explain it to them, oh, okay.
That's do- that's doable, let's manage.
Thank you, so let's manage that, right, Mayor?
That's his job.
Oh, good.
Happy will be happy to, uh.
You know, I love you, brother, I just.
So, I guess I'm hearing, I don't know, is it majority Lakeland, or is there, do we have time to at least go and contact some of these MyRMA members?
Regardless of what we decide.
And former members, and see if we wanna consider them?
I think.
Cause I'm, I'm still on the fence, quite honestly.
Even if we decide tonight to go with Lakeland, I still think we should contact the other cities and stuff in preparation for next year in the committee.
Yeah, I think that's very, it's a good idea.
But my fellow Alderman made a good point, and I don't mean to brush everybody, but we are kind of in a spot where we need to make the side, the decision, and I like MyRMA, I, I, I mean, if I was to, if this was earlier in the year, and I had more time, I would go MyRMA.
I, I feel that same way.
Okay?
And I want MyRMA right now, and so, something's got to change.
So you want the unknown.
Something's gonna have, yes, sir, something's gonna have to change dramatically for me to change my mind by this time, three months before this time next year, but in, in the case we're being pressed for something, I'm comfortable going with Lakeland with the understanding.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna be covered, it's all about coverage.
Exactly, until we have our committee, sir, until we, until we are better fat.
And if, if you wanna be in that, and the problem we've had is, there's the board, not this board, but the boards in the past, we've never, it's, we've never been involved.
Exactly.
And that's great to be involved, and it just, but it takes time.
And we never had to.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you something, I don't know about you, our customers, the taxpayers, are getting more savvy, and they're reaching out, and they're contacting us, they are getting ahold of me, I didn't even know that you could call me from Facebook.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's awesome.
And, oh my God, bing, 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 I'm supposed to be a friend, hello? Okay, they've talked to you too, who the hell are you? So they're getting, I'm just telling the Alderman here, they're getting smarter and they're gonna come after you.
Well, my ward is one of those folks.
You lucky.
Bring them on, I've always.
All right, so.
I was a real advocate for the TV, tell them by the meeting.
All right, let's go, let's do, let's make a decision, are we gonna, do we wanna put it off, or do we wanna, do we wanna make a decision to do what Mike recommends, what, what do we wanna do here?
I'm sticking with Lakeland.
Lakeland. Ashley.
I'm Lakeland.
Mike.
Uh, Lakeland, sir.
Okay, that's forwarded, I take it.
Lakeland as well until, I'm fine with Lakeland, until we get our ducks in a row.
That's the way I.
For, for the year, with the intention.
Because we're under the gun.
Right.